Okay. I am calling this meeting of the April, uh, this meeting on April 30th, 2018 of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on April 26, 2018 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. We will be heading into executive session, so I-
Do a roll call.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Dr. Swanson?
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. We will be heading into executive session, so I'd like to read the executive session statement. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. The matter to be discussed is contract negotiations, and the matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion and second to go into closed session?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll be going into executive session, we'll be back at 7:30. Look, may we have a roll call, please?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Dr. Swanson?
Mr. Hio?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can everybody please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two sets of minutes to approve. One set from the special meeting of April 9th, in which we discussed the strategic plan. May I have a motion and second to approve the special minutes of April 9th?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. About the special meeting. I was not very happy at all at the special meeting, that the special meeting was not recorded. If there's any meeting that should have been recorded, it's the meeting where 99% of the meeting was discussion. We really don't need to record a meeting where 99% of it is roll call votes, which is what many of our meetings here are. So to have that flipped like that was really terrible. Now, I'm not going to vote no on the minutes because they are what they are, even though there were many discussion points that were left out of the minutes. I understand, you can't have a transcription. And we didn't have Mr. Mahmood that night, we didn't have our assistant board secretary that night. Dr. Antunes took the minutes and she did a fine job, because it's not a transcription, and we can't make a transcription of it because we don't have recording for the only meeting this year that we absolutely needed a recording for. Ms. Truha made some good points at that meeting that are not at all recorded in the minutes. I don't see any comment at all from Mrs. Haas in those minutes at all. And she made some comments during that meeting, including we were having discussion of what we could do for special education students, and whether or not we could try to bring back some of the special education students that are currently educated in private schools, about 50 to 60 each year. Mrs. Haas made the comment that this is supposed to be a strategic plan discussion about 2,600 students, not 50. If we want to have them back, we can put them in trailers. I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that comment in the minutes. So I'm kind of disgusted, actually, to say the truth, I guess you can get that by my voice, kind of disgusted with the way that meeting went as far as not being recorded. But I'll vote yes on the minutes, won't reflect poorly on Dr. Antunes, who did the best she could. Thank you.
Since I was quoted incorrectly, I just want to clarify for anybody who doesn't know me, that I would never suggest putting special ed classes in a trailer, nor did I do that that night. My comment about trailers was relating to capacity issues that we have district-wide in terms of being able to provide, let's say, full-day kindergarten, or a universal pre-K program, and that perhaps the district should consider looking at trailers, at least on a temporary basis, for our ability to deal with additional enrollment and additional headcount in our schools. So if there was any mistake in terms of interpreting what I said, I would never suggest a trailer situation for 50 specific kids. So I hope that's clear. Anyway, are there any other comments on the, on the special meeting agenda? Seeing none?
My comment is that I, specifically when you made that statement, I asked for somebody to write it down, because I knew it would not appear in the minutes. I suspected it would not appear in the minutes. I turned to the small amount of public that was there, and I said, "Will one of you write it down?" Because we're not being recorded, and it's not going to appear in the minutes. So there you have it.
Okay. Okay, again, I stand by, stand by my comments. Are there any further comments or questions about the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a roll, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes.
I abstain.
Oh, abstain, got it.
One abstention.
Thank you.
Okay, we have our minutes of, our regular minutes from the meeting of, our regular minutes of April 16th. May I have a motion and second for that?
Still moved?
Second. Thank you. Any comments or questions about the minutes of April 16th? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Okay. We received some correspondence, that's acknowledged on our agenda. And our next item was supposed to be a public hearing and board approval of the 2018-19 budget, but given our, our crowd and our interest in spotlighting our students, we're going to move the agenda to do that first. So I will have Dr. Schiff introduce it.
Thank you, Madam President. Every month, we try to highlight the great things that are going on throughout the district. And tonight, we have the GEMS group that is here from Amsterdam. And to introduce our teachers and students, we have the principal of Amsterdam Elementary School, please welcome and join with me in welcoming Dr. Mary Ann Mulady.
Good evening. This year, Mrs. Moss approached me, and she wanted to start a GEMS club at Amsterdam School. And GEMS club is girls who excel in math and science. I was really excited about the opportunity, and she went out and I got the help of Mr. Leon and Mrs. Kinné, and they ran a wonderful program for these young ladies after school. Lots of exciting thinking, experimenting, and exploring took place. So I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Moss.
Thank you, Dr. Mulady. The idea for starting a GEMS club at Amsterdam School, or at the elementary level at all, actually came to me, I attended the New Jersey Science Convention this year. And when you go to conventions, you're inspired in so many ways. But I think that the notion of starting a GEMS club at the 4th grade level was probably my favorite way that I was inspired after the convention. I was shocked at the interest level. We were only able to take about half the girls that turned in the interest form, just because we felt to keep it a really hands-on experience, we needed to keep our numbers down around 25. But the interest is truly there, and the very notion of GEMS is to give girls exciting and fun, hands-on math and science experiences to spark that interest, and then hopefully they'll take that interest with them. At, in Hillsborough, we currently have a GEMS club at the middle school, sorry, at the middle school level, and I think that I can safely say, this group of girls would be very interested in pursuing that, again, later in their academic career. So you don't need to hear it from me, I'm going to let them tell you all about their experience.
Hey Emmy, isn't it awesome that we got to be part of the very first GEMS club at Amsterdam School?
Yeah, I really loved all the hands-on projects.
I didn't even know what an engineering challenge was until I joined GEMS club.
In case you were wondering, GEMS stands for Girls Excelling in Math and Science. In GEMS club, we've worked together to tackle lots of cool engineering challenges.
Hey Elizabeth, remember our first GEMS club meeting when the Liberty Science Center came in and taught us about the science of flight?
That was amazing. Who would have thought that you could make a hovercraft out of an old CD and a balloon?
I really loved designing and testing the gliders. My group really got some good lift.
Having the chance to go back and redesign and test our gliders gave us the chance to make them a lot better and learn from our mistakes.
The story, oh wait, the story we read about the polluted river in India got me thinking about cleaning up dirty water in the environment.
Designing a filter to clean dirty water and still stay under budget was very challenging. At first, my group had great flow capacity, but the water was still dirty. But then we went back and redesigned our filter. After we substituted a coffee filter for a piece of cheesecloth, we were able to get a waterway cleaner.
My group's filter design got the water really clean, but it took forever. As you can tell by the video, we had so much fun testing our filters.
I was surprised to learn that even the best scientists cannot accurately predict an earthquake. They can be really destructive.
I was happy to learn that engineers have developed more earthquake-resistant buildings that sway instead collapse.
My group used Play-Doh and straws to design a structure that would stood an earthquake. Check out our video.
My favorite part about GEMS club was working together with so many different 4th grade girls. Everyone had such great ideas.
I love the engineering challenges. Hands-on projects are my favorite kind, and I really learned a lot.
That was all really fun, but my favorite GEMS club meeting was Career Day. I couldn't believe we actually video-conferenced with Michelle McKenna, the Chief Information Officer of the NFL. She really inspired me.
I was really inspired by Julie, the veterinarian technician. I would love to work in that.
There were so many interesting science jobs that I never even knew existed. I loved Career Day, too.
I am so glad that I joined GEMS. I love science now, and it was incredibly fun to work with so many awesome 4th grade girls.
So that's all you have? We're definitely planning to do GEMS club again next year, and obviously, if any elementary schools would be interested in doing it, we would love to work with them to get their program going.
We thank you for, for your work. Let's give another round of applause to the Amsterdam GEMS club. I ask the board for their consideration of a five-minute brief recess, so the board can greet the students and maybe say thank you to the parents who are out tonight. Madam President?
Thank you.
Without objection?
Recession, five minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, we can now resume our meeting after that lovely presentation by our Amsterdam girls. Okay, we move on to a public hearing and board approval of the 2018-19 school budget. So to begin, I would start with Dr. Schiff in a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure to present the, the final budget for the 18-19 school year. As I go through it, you'll see that it is very similar to the tentative budget that was presented about six weeks ago. Our budget development process begins in October of the prior year, where principals and department heads submit their budget requests, plus rationale, to Mr. Mahmood and myself for review. During the months of March and February, we submit our budget requests to the board, and they are reviewed at the committee level in all three of our standing committees, the Education Operations and Human Resources Committee. On March 15th of this year, we received our state aid. And on March 20th, the Operation Committee met to review the 18-19 tentative budget, and it was presented for the board's consideration and approved on March 26th. Between March 26th and today, committees continue to meet to have some discussions on the finalized budget, and tonight, we present to you the, the final budget at the public hearing, and the board will vote on, on the budget tonight. So what does this budget have in store? In terms of program improvements, each year, we focus in on a different curriculum area. Next year's focus is in social studies, so we increase significantly the budget for material supplies, curriculum writing, training, as well as curriculum materials as such. We are also putting into this budget a new student assistance counselor, and we have additional monies that are set aside for security investments. It's about $50,000, it's not a significant amount, but as we move through the process, we are anticipating that we're going to be spending additional resources on school security. We also have in the budget a new American Sign Language position. We are very fortunate that we added American Sign Language this past year at the high school, and it was an overwhelming success, so much so that, that we have a great deal of intent for our high schoolers to move ahead with their American Sign Language, and we are going to be searching for an additional position there. We are also creating a new position, it's a maintenance position, that's going to be focusing on heating ventilation and air conditioning systems throughout the district. We anticipate that this will actually save us money to provide additional preventative maintenance and help service from our employee, rather than paying a private contractor to come on in and do the work that, that our new position will, will do for us. In terms of cost drivers, these are the, the similar, the same type of cost drivers we see every year. Salaries, healthcare cost increases, special education is increasing all-in above 2%, and transportation continues to grow beyond the 2% cap. How do we manage our costs? Well, our employees contribute more than 20% of their cost of healthcare currently, and that's a significant cost savings to, to the community. We also have revenue generating in the district. We have the Children at Play program, which is a wraparound program for our half-day kindergarten students. This will be the fifth year that it's in existence, and we are very happy to report that we have generated close to $1 million that does, that's net. That means that we were able to support additional positions in the district that we didn't have to cut. So those, those revenue generating services that we have right now really are doing its trick. We also have purchasing agreements, and we realize economies of scale. We also do E-rate, and E-rate is a federal revenue that comes into the district for a variety of technology purchases. And again, as I said before, the HVAC position, the maintenance position, is going to lessen overtime costs as well as contracted services. Now, this is an important screen here. This walks through the net increase and decrease of positions. But before I talk about next year, I need to talk about current year. We had additional positions that were needed in the current year's budget that weren't budgeted for. This is almost entirely due to increase in the area of special education, as well as nursing services. We hired two additional special ed teaching positions in current year's budget, a halftime preschool position, nine full-time equivalent, it's actually more than, than nine, but some are part-time, some are full-time, these are instructional assistants, and a halftime school nurse position at Woods Road Elementary School. And all of these positions, 12 full-time equivalent positions, are rolling over into next year's budget. We also have newly budgeted positions, some of which I talked about. Now, remember, this is net, so I'll, I'll walk you through that in a second. We have a net increase of one special education teacher, again, a net increase of one and a half full-time equivalent instructional assistants, the student assistance counselor, as I mentioned before, and the HVAC maintenance specialist. Remember, I said that we have a, a new American Sign Language person that's going to come on board as well, but that, there's going to be reduction in the world language department in order to, to balance that position out. That's again, an increase in newly created positions for the 2018-2019 budget, a 4.5 position. As a result of all of those additional positions, we are going to have to make reductions of staffing in next year's budget. The reductions are going to be primarily at the high school. We're going to reduce by four teachers there. We looked at average class sizes in order to make a decision about where to reduce. At the high school, some of those class sizes are actually the smallest in the district. So these are, these are areas that we feel have the minimal impact on, on students and student learning. And we're also going to be going from three sections of transitional primary to two sections of transitional primary, a drop in, in one position. We hope and anticipate that all of those reductions will be due to attrition. Can't make that, that promise, but that's what we're, we're hoping, and it looks like that's going to be the case. So again, we are rolling over 12 full-time equivalent positions from this year's budget into next year's budget. We have four and a half positions that are rolling up, and five positions that are being reduced. This is a very important chart here. This shows what our state aid looks like over a period of time from 2009-2010 school year to what is anticipated for next school year. As you can see, we had over $26 million of state aid in the '09-'10 school year. We are still $1 million less than what we were aided in that year. There was this huge drop between the 2009-2010 and the '10-'11 school year. Many of us remember that year, that was when the recession hit. It's actually the year after the recession, there was federal grant money that helped delay what was, what was the inevitable in the state of New Jersey, where all districts were reduced by 5% of their operating expenses. At that time, Hillsborough Township Public Schools lost, I think it was close to 66 positions, 44 of them were teachers. So over the next few years, we got two years of increased state aid, from the '11-'12 to the, to the '12-'13 school year. But then since the '12-'13 school year, we've remained relatively flat, while costs continue to increase. This, by the way, is an unsustainable path, especially when you have a 2% property tax cap, without having your state aid grow at at least 2%. This puts, this puts pressure on taxpayers, it also puts pressure on our own budget as well. So what does our taxes look like as we move forward? We're going to go to the 2% property tax cap, which is an additional $1.8 million worth of revenue increases, as well as taking a healthcare waiver, which is allowable at this point, of about $1.7 million. As a result of those revenue increases, the tax impact for a home that's assessed at $400,000 is an increase of $9 for the year. The reason that the increase is so small, even though we're raising the levy by over $3 million, is because the ratable base grew. And the ratable base grew by, by over 3.5% or so, and that helped to keep that tax increase for everybody else relatively flat. The levy itself is increasing by 3.62%, and that equates to a property tax rate increase from 1.605 on $100 to assessed property value, to 1.607. That's an increase of 14, 14 of 1%. It is 14 one-hundredths of 1%. That's about as close to flat as you can get for Hillsborough. That's the good news. For our neighbors in Millstone, the levy is increasing about 3.84%. The rate is going up from 1.75 to 1.826. Their tax rate is increasing significantly by 4.45%, and a home assessed at $400,000 would see an increase of $310 for the year. This is a chart that shows our cost per pupil compared to like districts, which are districts that are K-12 with over 3,500 kids, and the state average. The state average is the first one on, on the left-hand side. The state average is $15,714 per pupil. Like districts is $15,575 per pupil. We spend $14,964 per pupil. And this is the most recent data that we have, it's in the 16-17 budgeted year. Our total administrative cost per pupil, you see a similar pattern. The state spends, on average, $1,688 per pupil, like districts are 1,589 per pupil, and we spend much less, at $1,372 per pupil. So in terms of frugal spending, we spend $750 less per student than the state average. I want to say that again. We spend $750 less than the average per pupil expenditure in the state of New Jersey. If we spent the average, we would be spending an additional $5.4 million. And that's just hitting the average, as we know that there's many districts that are actually spending above the average. So what does our final budget look like? The final budget is $129,865,587. That's an increase of 1.14%. And it's broken down into three areas. The first area is the general fund, where those are the monies that we use to actually run the district, pay for teacher salaries, supplies, et cetera. That's going up slightly above 2%. Grants and entitlements, we receive monies from the, the federal government, for the most part. Not a lot, but we do, we do receive some. And we budget for that at about 85%. And the debt service is actually going down by almost $800,000 this year. And that's good news, it's dropping by over 20%. And that's why when we look all-in in terms of grants, repayment of debt, and general fund, the budget is going up 1.14%. Our key takeaways is that our new curriculum focus moving into next year is social studies. We also have an additional student assistance counselor, and we're making additional investments in security. I also want to share this with the community as, and the board, as I did when I prepared the tentative budget. We stripped down surpluses in this particular budget in order to make only five position reductions. If we didn't, we would be making more reductions. This can't happen every single year. And it's going to make it a struggle moving forward unless things change. Unless things change in terms of state aid, or unless there's additional cap relief on it. Stay tuned, we'll see what happens. At this point, I'll take questions from the board, and then I know we'll have public comment as well.
Any questions from the board? So the public understands, we have, in all of our committee meetings, reviewed the budget extensively over the last several months, so none of this information is new to us, but we just want to give everybody one last chance for comments. Seeing none, we can move on to public hearing on the budget. Are there any speakers?
Good evening. Carl Sarachi, Hillsborough Township Committee, 379 South Branch Road. It's a little unusual for someone from Township Committee coming here this evening. Primary purpose is, I actually, I'm here on behalf of Committee Mendel-Cor, who's the school, the liaison to the school board. Fortunately, work-related matter kept him from coming this evening, but wanted to touch upon, because, you know, we've been having, and I know some of you do know, that some discuss- discussions about some costs that the township's incurring, or has been incurring for many years. On behalf of the school board with regards to the residency in the municipal building, I know that there was a discussion between Ms. Haas and Mayor McCauley. There was supposed to be a follow-up meeting following when the school board learned of their aid numbers, but for whatever reason, that was refused. Thus, my presence here tonight, because it's probably the only way I can get a meeting, is actually coming tonight. So, I'm assuming that the tonight's budget doesn't include any expenditures for, I'm going to say, you know, for possible future lease payments, utilities, et cetera, that's been discussed in those prior meetings?
That's correct.
So, what was the reason why you wouldn't have a follow-up meeting?
Excuse me?
Why was the reason you wouldn't have a follow-up meeting?
Oh, because Vice President Dr. Lorraine Swanson and I met with two members of the Township Committee, and meeting with a third person from the Township Committee behind closed doors would have violated your quorum.
All right. I wasn't worried about a quorum. There's supposed to be a follow-up meeting.
I know you don't, but I do.
Well, I do know, and we thought it was kind of unusual that you excluded your liaison to the Township Committee and your chair of operations, which I do believe covers buildings and grounds.
That's not your decision, with all due respect.
No, I know. I'm just making that as a comment. Very unusual. Someone that would have that expertise to be in there.
Duly noted. Our public sessions, our public comment sessions are not supposed to be question-and-answer sessions. Are you finished with your comment?
Well, questions and answers never seem to stop you in front of my Township meeting, so.
Hey, you can feel free to stop me.
We're very open.
Or be rude like you usually are.
No, we're not. Never rude.
Grandstanding, perhaps?
Never rude.
No.
Never rude, never.
I got the clips, Carl. But neither here nor there. Can you please finish your comment?
Well, I think it's very disappointing that, since you assume the presidency of this board that has become a very hostile working relationship with the Township Committee, had very good working relationships under, when Board Member Gillette and Board Member Kintz were presidents. And it's very disappointing that you take this cavalier attitude, that you don't believe that you should be paying your fair share, considering you've got no problems blowing through caps. I'm assuming that utilizing the bank cap this year again.
Don't assume.
I saw it. Well, actually, you know, that's a very good point about assumptions. It would be, I would recommend, highly recommend the board to actually...
Excuse me, maybe I have a point of order here. The speaker is actually directing personal comments towards our board president, and I don't believe that's an order of our meeting. Can our parliamentarian comment on that, Mr. Mahmood?
I guess we have our attorney, Mr. Lapierre, is that as far as public comment, it's really just we listen, and ultimately, there's no exchange of information. If the board president chooses to elect to say thank you for your comments, he may do so, and we could record those comments accordingly.
That's correct.
So, yes, Mr. Lapierre, that's, the position of the board could be to thank Mr. Sarachi for his comments, and Mrs. Haas does not have to have a give and take.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I'm not done. And stop hiding behind the attorney.
Like you do. Okay. Oh, my God. Keep going. Go all night.
Very disrespectful.
Totally.
Very disrespectful.
I take your comments from whence they come onward.
How does one get an audience with the board when they refuse to hold?
So, I'm not sure I'm clear on your question. In terms of whether the Township Committee wants to...
She doesn't want to speak to me directly, so she's kind of circumventing, so I just figured you might be the best source at this point as to how to get an audience.
So, in terms of having a meeting with committees between the Township Committee and the Board Committee, obviously, those requests need to be made to the board president or the superintendent or business administrator. If there's a shared services committee or liaison, you would go through that person to try to arrange for a meeting. I mean, it wouldn't typically be done at a public meeting, but if there are going to be committee meetings and meetings between two members or between two committees, one from the town, one from the Board of Education, then the appropriate way to do that would be to submit a written request to the board president and the superintendent, and they'll respond to that.
Point of information, that meeting took place already with two members of the five-person Township Committee.
Well, I'm adjusting, just you're talking about a request for a meeting in general. If you're talking about a specific meeting, then maybe...
Right. For any members, are any members free to meet? Or does it have to go through the board president?
And vice president.
That's where the point of contact would be, right.
So...
And we met with your chair, your mayor.
All right.
I didn't tell her who to bring?
No, but if, but she did not deny anyone that wanted to be part of that, particularly the school board liaison or the liaison to the school board was not prohibited from meeting.
Well, then you would have had a quorum problem.
Yeah, one. Two people.
Then somebody who was there would not have been able to attend.
Correct. If someone wants to attend, that they would be able to do that.
Okay.
I just thought it was just, again, very disappointing that we haven't had our follow-up meeting.
Point made. Can we move on? We have a budget of $129 million to either approve or not approve.
Yes, going through the cap again, and not paying some of your essential basic amenities that should be part of your budget. So, I would recommend next year to perhaps do that. I don't know if tonight you can make any amendments to your budget, because it would certainly, it certainly would be very wise to perhaps table it, if possible, to make some amendments.
Why not? Not possible.
Oh, it's always possible. You can always table anything. I sit on a governing body for almost 15 years, so you can table if you'd like and make amendments.
There is a statutory deadline for our budget. We don't get to do it in October like you do.
We don't do ours in October. Coming from someone who actually served as an administrator, you should know.
Long time ago.
Yep.
Trying to forget.
Yep. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I'm bound by that agreement.
And you'll be able to forget after this year, too, because you're not running again. What a disappointment for the town. Can we move on, please?
All right. Well, I'm just offering that up, that suggestion, one more time. Shame that you ran right up against the deadline and failed to do your duties and your responsibilities.
I believe our duties and responsibility are taking care of the schoolchildren of this district, something that we do for less than the average cost per pupil of the entire state of New Jersey, and produce way over average results. So, before you go and insult any of our staff members about what we accomplish in this district, I would really suggest you wrap up.
Could you please tell me where I made such a comment? I just talked about doing the fiduciary duty to perhaps put into your budget some of your obligations for the space that you take. You're refusing to pay.
We do. We've already reduced our budget, unfortunately, by five teachers.
We know that's going to be through attrition, through retirements.
I'm glad you know that.
I would also, you know, suggest, because I saw that you needed to take the health cap exception again, is to perhaps renegotiate with your healthcare provider, insurance provider, just like it was done many years ago to save a bunch of positions. Just an offer.
Any other comments?
Well, I could also have a few pages, but I won't go tit-for-tat, but I could tell you everything that the Township Committee does to help our children, too. So, that through the, through some of the services that we provide, you know, and cooperative agreements that we do with the Board of Ed. It's just a shame that you've decided to become very hostile in your short few months, you know, at the helm. You may want to go take a look at maybe some of the former meeting tapes when, you know, when Mr. Gillette and Mr. Kintz were running the school board. Much better times.
Yeah, I don't think so, but thanks for the suggestion.
Thank you all. Very disappointing, but thank you regardless.
Are there any other people with comments about the budget instead of personal attacks? You can leave any time. Seeing none?
There were no personal attacks.
Oh, okay.
That better for the record.
Gotcha. Any other comments from the public? Oh, my goodness. I guess then we will move on with our agenda, and I will take a motion to approve the 2018-19 budget. May I have a motion and a second, please?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion from the board?
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Mahmood, Ms. Zalinski. Her name is still Zalinski, right? For a few more weeks?
Yes.
Dr. Schiff and all the budget managers and supervisors, everyone who worked on the budget. It was a tough budget to do. I appreciate their work. Having said that, having said that, I'm, over the past, I would say, six years, over the past five or six budgets, I've become increasingly less comfortable, disappointed with the budget process as a whole. This stems from when we reorganized, my feelings about this stem from when we reorganized the board and eliminated many of the committees, consolidated down into three committees. We did that around 2012, and I think in 2013, we passed a policy in our bylaws with new descriptions, I guess, charges of what the committees do. The operations committee has two subheadings on that, facilities and finance, but everything we do on there, 99.9% of it is facilities. There is practically no more finance work. When there was a separate finance committee, I would say 100, I'm using a lot of percentages tonight, I just realized, but I'd say just about 100% of our work was as the budget committee, which in maybe decades past would have been called the budget committee. But since I've been on the board, it's been called the finance committee. Sometimes when we used to reorganize in April, we wouldn't even begin, we wouldn't even meet for the first time with finance committee until maybe October or November, because we would begin then to work on the budget. If you look at the bylaw now for committees, budget preparation or budget is not under the purview of any of the committees. There is no budget committee. There is no committee responsible for the budget. It's kind of insane. We used to meet with finance committee, we used to meet, like have an all-day Saturday meeting to go over budget from top to bottom. We really don't do that anymore. In operations committee, we look at just the facilities issues in the budget, and as a nod to former times, yes, we do take a look at the overall tax rate and tax impacts of our budget, but it pales in comparison to what we used to do. So, I'm voting yes tonight on the budget because the two things I advocated for are in the budget. The third student assistance counselor, which I've been asking for, for, I don't know, like before Dr. Schiff was here, maybe like eight years, something like that, is finally there. And something that I advocated for last year when I was board president, another person in maintenance, specifically tasked for specialty and HVAC. So, I'm going to vote yes on the budget for that, but I just, I don't like the process anymore, and I'm very disappointed in it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Chris?
I just want to give a different perspective on that, Greg, and I respect your position. I just want to give some input. Happy to live through four or five years of the old committee structure before the four or five years of the new committee structure. You're right, the finance committee did a lot of work to prepare the budget, but one of the things that we struggled with at that time was for the finance committee to be making decisions about the education portions of the budget without having a significant amount of input from the education committee. And other scenarios like that, where because the finance and budget process was concentrated in that one committee, in that all-day Saturday meeting, what was missing potentially was the input from the other committees about, just limited to their area of the budget. And I think it's a tough balance, and I'm not sure we do it right now either. I think it's tough to go either way, but I think that was one thing that was, the reason when we reorganized was to let, for example, the education committee have more input into the budget, because they spent all year working on the education issues that would eventually appear in the budget. So, I understand what you're saying, that I think there is a lack of, or less of a focus on a group from the board side preparing the budget, but I think the balance to that is letting the other committees have more input than they would have had in the past. Thank you.
Can I answer, Chris? Chris, I agree with you, and I should have mentioned that in my statement, that one of the motivating factors in reorganizing was so that the other committees would have a greater input in the budget. I appreciate that. But also, I didn't mention, and maybe I should have started with this. In the vacuum that has been created without having a specific budget committee, that vacuum has been filled, has been filled, I think, by administration. And the board, I think, has lost something. That's really my point in this. The board members have lost something in this, and the board members are the ones that answer to the people, not the administrators. So, I think in this new configuration, and we've had a good try at it now, five, six years, but I think we continually are losing more, putting more on administration continually each year. Maybe I should start with that point.
I would agree. I think it's a fair point, that the job of coordinating that input and therefore sort of driving the process has fallen to the administration. I don't want to get us too far off the process here, but is that something worthy of tying back to the governance committee?
Yes.
Because that is where you at least have the chairs of the committees together, and you would have at least some amount of input from each committee area, which I think was an important part of the organization, but you would still have the board driving the budget process alongside the administration, instead of the administration having to be that coordinator.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea, Chris, and I was sort of heading in that direction also after Greg made his comments. I mean, having been on the board longer than everybody, I would just like to say that over the years, the process has been very different, and to some degree, the change in the committee structure has made it a little bit more disjointed, but at the same time, I think each committee is working with a lot more detail than we ever worked with before. We get a line item budget with every single detail of the budget, every staff position, every, you know, every post-it note, every supply and piece of equipment, and that has been very helpful. I'm not sure that the board as a whole could go through that in that level of detail. So, what we may have given up in terms of overarching view of the budget, we're certainly getting in detail, and I think that has a great deal of value, too. But I would be very happy at the next governance committee, if we can do that, to talk about the committee structure and see if people are still happy with it. One of the things I did when I became president was to create the old communication committee again, because I thought that that was an area that needed more focus. And if Greg feels that, you know, perhaps we should look at dividing up the facilities versus finance piece of operations, we could talk about that at governance as well, because honestly, the operations committees go on for hours, and they really do have a... honestly, the Operations Committees go on for hours, and they really do have an awful lot of responsibility. So, shall we consider that at the next Governance Committee? Okay.
We're also going through a Board self-evaluation.
Yep.
That may be an opportunity to get feedback from all members on, on different things. And let me be clear about where, where I believe Administration responsibility ends and the Board's responsibility begins. Mr. Mahmood's job, my job, Dr. Antunes's job, is to help you to make well-informed decisions at the dais. And if there's a better structure in order to do that, I'm all ears. So, whatever the mechanism is to help you make a well-informed decision when you vote in the public, we are dedicated to providing you with that information.
Yes, and, you know, I would like to join in with all the people who have commended our business administrator and his staff, and our superintendent for all the work that they did. We come in and, you know, we ask questions, but we're asking questions on a book that looks like this. Big, big wide binder with all of this information about the budget. And honestly, if you want detail, it's right there for you to see. And, you know, I'd just like to thank everybody who's involved in the preparation of the budget. This starts in October with all of our, you know, buildings, our principals, and our staff, and everybody gets input into this many times along the way. So, I'm proud of our budget. I think we've made the best of a very bad situation with flat state aid and limited revenues, and, you know, it always bothers me every year when Dr. Schiff talks about how we're, you know, we're below average in terms of spending per person, and that the additional money that would get us up to average spending is something like $5.4 million. And when you think about how many teachers and how many facility improvements and how many, everything we do could be purchased with $5.4 million, it's a shame. And it's a credit to our teachers and our staff that we get so much out of so little money. But that would be my comment. So, we have our motion?
Yes.
Are there any other comments on the budget? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Miss Santa Fonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, now I will move on to comments from the Board and the public on the action agenda. We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during Board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, that you may speak about any item that's listed on tonight's agenda before the Board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there's another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the Board. In instances where the Board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the Board President or Superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the Board to discuss personnel issues in public session. With that, may I have any public comment on the agenda? Quiet night. I remember when we used to have two hundred people at the Hillsborough High School Auditorium on budget nights, but I guess this sort of must mean we're doing a good job. So, moving on. Ah, Board President's Report.
Before we do-
Yes.
I wondered if we have-
Okay. I have many things to report since our last Board meeting. On April seventeenth, Dr. Schiff, our Superintendent of Schools, was invited to speak at a meeting of Healthier Somerset, which is a coalition created to improve the health and well-being of everyone who lives and works in Somerset County. The organization's mission is to promote healthy lifestyles through collaboration among its partners. And Dr. Schiff, along with Michael Robertson, the Somerset County Prosecutor, addressed the organization about mental health and school violence. As a result of the presentation by Dr. Schiff and Prosecutor Robertson, the Directors of Guidance from Somerset County Schools will be invited to meet with members of Healthier Somerset to share and discuss best practices that are currently occurring in their districts. This past Saturday, the New Jersey School Boards Association hosted a program that took an in-depth look at school finance titled School Finance 101. Program attendees included Board of Education members from all over the state. Dr. Schiff was a guest speaker at the two-hour program and provided attendees with a better understanding of school funding and the issues that surround current funding. Tomorrow, Dr. Schiff will serve on a five-person panel of experienced superintendents who will direct discussions and answer questions, with an audience made up of second- and third-year school superintendents from around the state. This panel discussion is being hosted by the New Jersey Association of School Administrators as a way to provide mentorship and support for novice superintendents. Thank you, Dr. Schiff, for not only making a difference in Hillsborough, but for also representing Hillsborough throughout New Jersey. Since our last Board of Ed meeting, the school district hosted the Ever Fifteen Minutes Project at Hillsborough High School, which, as every year, was very meaningful to the kids who attended that. We also, on the School Board side, had a school, Somerset County School Board Association Program on School Security that was held on April twenty-sixth. Ann and Jean and I attended, and we met with the person who's in charge for the State of doing school audits on security. And there were superintendents as well as a police chief and a guidance director who discussed this major topic that is very much on all of our minds. And very pleasantly for me, Jean Trujillo and five of my ESC Board members received either new certified or master Board Member designations at this event, so it was very, very nice. And coming up, I just want to announce on May sixteenth, NARCAN training will be given at the Municipal Building from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. This is available to anybody, from what I understand, and this was sponsored by the Hillsborough Millstone Municipal Alliance. And on May thirtieth, the Garden State Coalition of Schools Annual Meeting will be held in the morning, and all School Board members are invited to attend. I've been to these programs before, they're very, very educational. They have lined up two Assembly people, Mila Jacy and David Wolf, to talk about various educational issues. And Arcilio Pante, the President of the Board of Education for the State, will be there on a panel moderated by John Mooney of New Jersey Spotlight. And John Mooney is worth talking to about everything. He's got the whole pulse of education in this state. And upcoming on May fourth, this Friday, which our student representative will talk about when we get to our committee reports, is Spirit Night. So, be there or be square. That's my report. Your turn.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm pleased to share some wonderful news from around the district with our Board and those in attendance this evening. Congratulations to Hillsborough High School seniors Catherine Nyen and Diana Veronin. Months ago, Catherine and Diana were recognized as semifinalists in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. A few weeks ago, these women were selected for corporate-sponsored awards. Catherine won the National Merit Colgate-Pomala Company Scholarship, and Diana took home the National Merit Bristol Myers Squibb Company Scholarship. Corporate scholarship designate, corporate sponsors designate their awards for children of their employees or residents of the community where a community has operations, or for finalists who have career plans the sponsoring company wishes to encourage. To become a finalist, Catherine and Diana, along with approximately sixteen thousand student semifinalists from around the country and their high schools, had to submit a detailed scholarship application, including information to semifinalists' academic records, participation in school and community activities, leadership abilities, employment, honors, and awards received. The semifinalists must also be endorsed and recommended by high school officials, write an essay, and earn SAT scores that confirm the student's earlier performance. Let's give congratulations to Catherine and Diana. In February, Lambertville artist Kelly Sullivan brought her Mighty Fingers Facing Change Program to the Hillsborough Middle School to help HMS students create an original piece of art. HMS teacher Gina Kay was one of five statewide winners to have the opportunity to bring Sullivan and her program into the school to create an original piece of art, and this was funded by the NJEA. Please visit the middle school website and add your own creative touches to the project. Please join staff and students in completing the online virtual finger smear. Paint as little or as much as you'd like. We'd like to thank Gina Kay for all of her work. Please give her and all the students that participated a big round of applause. Our kindergarten students have been very busy over the past few weeks, observing about a dozen eggs in each of the kindergarten classrooms in the district. They have patiently watched their eggs, made observations, and learned about the growth process. This past week, the kindergarten chickens have finally hatched, and our kindergarteners will spend about a week and a half learning about their chicks before they leave the classroom. The Hillsborough Chicken Cam is also up and running. If you would like to see what our chickens are up to, please visit our district website at www.htps.us and take a peek. In other district bird news, Mrs. Woods, the mother duck who annually makes her nests in the courtyard at Woods Road School, has returned again this year. Her eggs are expected to hatch around Mother's Day. When her ducklings are ready to greet the world outside the courtyard, Mrs. Woods will lead them on a parade through the school and out the front door to do much celebration by all of the Woods Road School students and staff. This year, Miss Rose has gained some media attention, and you can also follow her comings and goings on Twitter with the hashtag #MrsWoodsDuck. And, and by the way, online, if you, if you just Google it, you could see a video of the ducks with their ducklings walking through Woods Road School. It is, it's just a blast. This past weekend, the Hillsborough High School Choir, led by Mrs. Juliana Lobiondo, took over Montreal, and in Canada, the choir took home three gold ratings, a sweepstakes award, an outstanding soloist maestro award, and adjudicator awards. Congratulations to our high school choir and Miss Lobiondo for all of their hard work.
Moving right along, we'll move on to committee reports at this time, and I'd like to start with Macy, our student representative, who will talk about Spirit Night.
Hi. So, okay, this is, this week is Spirit Week, and we started the week off with ending our penny drive that started last week. We're still in the middle of tallying all the money we've raised, but I think right now it's over two hundred, and all the money will be donated. Today also was Wear Red Day in spirit of the freshman whose color is red. Tomorrow will be Wear Green Day for the sophomores. Wednesday will be Wear Blue Day for the juniors, and Wear Black on Thursday for the seniors. And then Friday, we all wear our shirts, and Spirit Night begins at 4:30 Friday evening, and I think everyone's really excited, and the murals are looking good, all the dances are coming together. And I know tonight and Wednesday, the freshmen and juniors had dance practice at the high school, and Tuesday and Thursday, the sophomores and seniors have dance practice at the high school. So, all going to come together Friday night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Macy, and I'd just like to say thank you for your service on the Board. I don't know if you'll be able to be at our June meetings, but just in case you're not, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the whole Board for bringing the students' perspective to our meetings. Thank you. Okay. Education Committee, Ann Harris will be subbing for Dr. Swanson?
Yes, the Education Committee met on Tuesday, April seventeenth, at 11:00 AM in the Municipal Building, in attendance were Dr. Lorraine Sasan, Brett Cooper, Judy Haas, Dr. Antunes, and Dr. Schiff, in addition to myself. The Education Committee approved the edition of a novel called Peak Performance for grades nine to twelve for the English curriculum, and we are looking tonight to vote on several other novels for the summer reading program and the AP Language. This would provide an excellent opportunity to read and discuss with your son or daughter in high school, or to listen and learn by sharing perspectives on topics such as the social justice, and get some of their thoughts and opinions during the summer when time is more relaxed and things are a little bit able, you're a little bit able to concentrate on some ideas. And as far as we looked at the policy for first reading for the administration of school surveys, and we also discussed some of the items for the budget. We also had revisions, discussions for the two, the 2017-18 school calendar, and one of those being just recently done on April twenty-sixth, where we had to have a half-day for the students and a half-day for the staff in service. And mention was made that we may need to relook at the calendar for 2018-19 because of the trending school snow days. Also, we received from the consultants some updates for the strategic plan, and that took our time from eleven till almost two o'clock to do.
Yes.
So, we had a full plate, and unless anyone has a question, I will stop talking.
Thank you, Ann. Very good for your first report, appreciated. Operations, Greg?
Thank you. Operations Committee met on April eighteenth. First up, it was also a long meeting, about four hours. First up was Brian Reiser and Mary Costanzo from Brown &amp; Brown. They are our insurance brokers. They reported to us about negotiations with a different healthcare insurance carrier that looked very promising. In fact, we are close to finalizing a move to a different carrier. Unfortunately, cannot be ready for tonight, but we anticipate having some action on that at the, at the next meeting. We also had, as Mrs. Harris just reported about her, about Education Committee, we also had a report from our architect EI associates relating to the strategic plan, focusing on exactly what the feasibility study will provide to us. They said it will provide multiple options that will include repurposing facilities, building new facilities, redistricting, and opportunities to close buildings at savings, et cetera. We're going to have the whole, whole menu of items to choose from. We directed some questions to them, and we put out some questions that we think the public will have, and we want to make sure that they answer all of those, and we're confident that they will. Dr. Schiff reported that the New Jersey Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning will, will conduct a school security audit of the district at no cost to us, and we're going, we, Operations Committee approved that. Let's see. Wilson Quintero, our Billingston Grounds Supervisor, reported to us about new legal requirements regarding carbon monoxide detectors in the schools. He's still investigating that. We talked about fixing air conditioning at the Woods Road School main office. Let's see, what else from him? Some other concerns- Some other concerns about the, some problems at the HES roof in some areas. And that was, that was enough from Wilson. And we talked about, well, we actually had a report from EI, our Architect of Record, about the donation of the window unit air conditioners at Sunny Meets School. He approves this from an engineering and architectural perspective, so we expect that donation to go through without any problems. We discussed some concerns with Aramark. We're unhappy to have to report that we did not receive a grant from Sustainable Jersey for Schools that was going to be used for filtered water bottle fillers at some of our schools, but we're going to probably use another route to still get some of those. We also discussed the, the fact that school district currently does not have a lease for the premises occupied at the municipal building. The action item, and all I can guess are, of course, the action item on that was that the administration will provide additional information to us, and the, we directed the Board Attorney to look into the lease and everything that might require. Is that right, Mr. Telfer? You're going to, you're not right, you haven't looked into that yet, you're going to report future date? Okay. So, we have not received a report on that yet. That's all I can say on it, because it might be an item for negotiation in the future. And one other thing, the Operations Committee approved a 5% increase for building use fees for some categories of our groups that use the buildings. Is that right? Right, right to put it?
Yes.
Yeah, for some of the, we have different categories. For some of the categories, we're going to have a 5% increase in the fees, starting, I guess, July 1st, I guess. And this would, they have not had an increase for, like, probably close to a decade. Is that correct? Okay, there you go. That's everything from Operations Committee. Thank you.
Okay. Human Resources, Dina?
Okay, so in addition to the personnel issues that remain confidential, we did talk about recruiting, which was a very great uplifting conversation. Mr. Volpe was out at the New Jersey School Jobs Career Fair, and so he spent two and a half hours there during the week, and had so many applicants that he actually could not do an interview. We did quick screenings and was able to give out his business card and follow up with people. So, it's very exciting to hear good news that people would like to come to Hillsborough and work here. And so far after tonight, hopefully, we will have 12 positions filled for the upcoming year. And he's working on getting the rest of vacancies finished, or hopefully filled by June. We talked about the coaches, because it's always a concern, are we ready for the next season? So, most of the fall coaches are already in place and have been approved. There are a few outstanding ones that they are working on, which are the assistant coaches. So, two assistant coaches for girls soccer, assistant for field hockey, and two assistant for football. So, they are moving along, and hopefully, we'll be ready to go for the start of the season. The other thing we wanted to just remind people of is when we talk about personnel and staffing and getting ready, our cutoff for enrollment into the schools is August 1st. So, for class sizes and for teachers, the cutoff to add additional sections in the elementary schools is August 1st. So, please, I know there's always ways to get, there's flyers, whatever you need to do to tell your neighbors that are moving in, or your friends, that please, we do have a deadline, we want everyone registered August 1st, so that we can plan appropriately for the sections in the elementary schools. So, they were the main things that we talked about, and it's hopefully still more good news to come.
Thank you very much. The Governance Committee met on the evening of April 17th, and we discussed the Board's self-evaluation and the Superintendent evaluation. We are going to start putting the paperwork together for those processes and hope to establish due dates from Board members by mid-June. And that way, we'll be able to have, hopefully, a meeting in the summertime to discuss that. We also discussed changing the process in terms of distributing minutes and agendas for Board meetings, as well as for committee meetings. So, we now have a situation where the committee chairs will get to see their committee agendas of items recommended by the administration, and add or change any other items that are on there, give a little lead time for that. So, that has been working out well, and hopefully, we'll continue that. So, that is the end of the committee reports. And are there any discussions among the Board, any questions about any of the comments that were made? I'd just like to highlight Dina's comment about if there are any people listening, to have your children enrolled in school as early as possible. I know that, you know, we accept children up to the day the school starts, but it's a lot better for planning.
And after.
And after, yes. It's a lot better for planning if we can get a very close assessment of how many sections we need and how many teachers we need. So, the sooner you are able to enroll your kid, the better our planning processes. And I don't know, actually, do you have a relationship with realtors in town where, you know, we ask people who are moving into town to be advised about enrollment?
Yeah, it's not uncommon that the principals work with those who are moving in, or people who know they're moving in, and try to network with them to get them in to register as quickly as possible.
Okay, that's great. All righty. With that, we can move on to the action agenda. So, I'll turn it over to the Superintendent.
Could I, could I just ask one question? In Mr. Gillette's report, he said something about Sustainable Jersey Grant being not...
Yeah, we did, we did not receive the grant. Mr. Mahmood can speak more to the particulars if you'd like.
Sure, sure. So, yes, Mrs. Harris, we were fortunate to get the first grant that we applied for, and then we applied for, I believe the second grant was a total of $10,000. We were anticipating putting in the water filling stations. So, we did get an email from Sustainable Jersey that indicated that we didn't get the grant, but they encouraged us to continue to apply. You know, we're, you know, we're certainly a little depressed about that, but we're not going to, we're going to continue to apply. We believe that the partnership with that first grant worked very well. So, they didn't say that we did anything wrong, they just, you know, they prioritized the grant, there's only so many districts that can get them. So, we're going to absolutely continue to apply for those grants. But we're also considering, because of the value of those filling stations, that we would pay for them internally and think about doing that, because they are important to those particular schools. But for Sustainable Jersey, we, we're going to keep applying and hopefully continue to, maybe we'll get some grants.
Hopefully, we can improve our relationship with the Sustainable Jersey schools.
That too.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Any others? If I may ask. Okay, education agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of Education to approve travel-related expenses. The HIP determination list, overnight field trips is listed, the approval of the novels, as reported out of the Education Committee, also approval of the 2018 ELL Summer enrichment program staffing list.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second for items 12-1 through 12-5?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about the education agenda? Seeing none, roll call.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Trheal?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources to approve retirements and resignations, as listed. In particular, the retirement of Deb Fingerhut, who's one of our instructional assistants at the middle school, who's worked with us since January 2nd of 2003, and Teresa Legreca, who's our 12-month secretary at the high school, Ms. Fingerhut's secretary. And she has worked with us since September of 2000. We thank both of them for their service to our district. Also, to approve transfers and change of assignments is listed, contract changes, leaves of absences, and the appointment of a nurse, long-term substitutes and substitutes as per attached. Also approve the appointments of teachers, as listed there. And I make a note for the Board that this is for the 2018-2019 school year, and to approve the coordinator of ESY program, as well as winter coaches, as was reported out of HR, student teachers, preapproval for extra-period coverage, as well as approval for extra-period coverage, and approve six-period coverage, approve policies for military leave for both teachers and support staff.
Okay. May I have a motion and second for items 13-1 through 13-13? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments about the Human Resources agenda? Seeing none, roll call.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Trheal?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of Operations to approve monthly financials, bills list, line item transfers, coordination of transportation service agreement, the HIP review, I'm sorry, that's all for that area. 14.4 is the last motion.
Okay, may I have a motion and second for Operations Agenda items 14-1 through 14-4?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Brad. Any comments or questions about the items on the agenda? Okay. May I have a roll call?
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Trheal?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There's a couple of informational items, including the HIP review, as well as suspension reports for the Board's review and consideration.
Okay. We are now at our second comments from the Board and public on any item, not necessarily on the agenda. Same rules go. Any members of the public? Oh, Macy.
Hi, I just want to thank you all for a good time here. Also, I'd like to readdress an issue we had earlier in the year with gym classes. So, I am in the largest gym class we have at school, it's Period 2. Now, I'm not the best at estimating, but I would have to say that there's maybe 300 girls and boys, separate, 300 girls, 300 boys, I'm not great at estimating, could be wrong. But that means there's at least maybe 200-something trying to get into one door of the locker room and out at the same time, all while we're all trying to change clothes. Now, as the weather gets warmer, it's even more uncomfortable, and we can only use the one door, because we can't use the one in the front in fear of boys walking by. It's a hot mess, and it's very frustrating to us and the teachers there. Not only that, with the new way gym is running, with staying in one class every, all year round, and being in this, with the same teacher, and all those kids in one class, when the weather is bad, we are all still in the gym, and there is nowhere for us to go. So, we are either endlessly, mindlessly walking around in circles of the gym, or playing the same thing every day. I don't know what class I'm in anymore, because I've just been playing volleyball for the past two weeks, because I haven't had a chance to go outside yet. But there's definitely an issue somewhere in there, whether it be scheduling or something else. But there also needs to be something done if this were to happen again, because I know I was in Period 2 gym last year, and it was an issue. It's even bigger this year with more students, and I don't think I want to change in the locker room anymore, just it, we're late for class now, too, because it takes us forever to get out. Something has to be done, if, not for this year, obviously, but maybe for next year, because it's not fair to us or the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you for putting that on our radar, and we'll certainly look into that for next year. And sorry that that happened for you, your group.
Sorry.
You're also illustrating yet another issue with facilities that we have within our high school, but we will follow up with our Supervisor of Health and Physi. Thank you.
Jane Stats, 101 Devonshire Court. This is regarding Spirit Night, which is, I was told it was moved to an earlier time to reduce the amount of free time that students had between when they were dismissed from school and the start of Spirit Night. However, they have a half-day this Friday, so that provides a lot of free time for them to, unfortunately, be involved with maybe drug or alcohol abuse, and so maybe something to consider in the future. And along those lines, will there be, will they be using the alcohol wands at Spirit Night, or afternoon, or whatever?
Yeah, that's the plan. For every, for every activity, they're using the wand. So, we have used them at 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 least two activities, prom and one of the dances, and it seemed to work out very well for a first time trying it. So, we're going to continue, broaden it as, as we need to broaden it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick comment. I'm not supposed to ask questions, but the comment that was made during the budget hearing with regards to no one coming out to speak to the budget, I may make a recommendation that next year, that after you introduce the budget, perhaps post the draft version online, so people have an opportunity to review it and analyze it. Since all that was available was the PowerPoint presentation, that may stir some public interest if they get to see the draft. We do that at the township committee level after we introduce ours, so we usually get a few people coming at the comment on ours. Thank you.
Mr. Mahmood, maybe for the public, you can explain the user-friendly budget process?
Sure. We are, Dr. Schiff, thank you, we are required after the public hearing, within 48 hours, to list on our website, that's readily available, the user-friendly budget, which gives details about the budget that was approved tonight by the Board. And we, you know, we definitely, if there are any questions about that, you're welcome to email the Board, we would be able to respond to that. But what's the, what's interesting about that is, it's designed so that the average person can look through it and see details, but sort of a summary format, but it would give a general, you know, idea of what the taxes look like, what the budget is, what the administrative costs are, contracts for top executive employees that are paid above a certain grade level. So, it does encompass the budget in totality. So, we are required to do that by law within 48 hours. Our expectation is that it would be posted before noon tomorrow. We'll get it out there ASAP.
I have a question for the Attorney. So, a few weeks ago, in the executive session, we did discuss the school district use of the office space at the municipal building. Correct. I mean, I can say that. So, can I tonight, without revealing anything that was said, meaning, make my own statement about that, about what I feel about that, or not? I'm hesitant to do without asking you, because I know it was a topic of discussion in executive session, and I feel inhibited, but at least I'm trying to be a good boy about it and ask you first.
So, in answer to that question, with respect to discussions that were had that would impact contract negotiations with the town, obviously, those would need to be held confidential, With regard to the general concept, no, that's not something that's prohibited in terms of whether, you know, to speak about factual issues with regard to it, or your opinion as to whether we should or shouldn't have one, that's not prohibited so long as we're not talking about anything that has to do with the contract negotiations, right? Do you follow what I'm saying?
Okay, so...
So, it's difficult...
I'm going to make a statement, you can slap me down if I have, if you have to.
Well, I would, I would suggest, in lieu of doing that, I would just review whatever comments you're going to make, and just make sure that while you may be offering your comments... and just make sure that while you may be offering your personal opinion, it doesn't give any insight as to the, insight as to what the board discussed in negoti, you know, as part of the negotiations. It's, it's, without knowing what your comments are, it's hard for me to say. I'm trying to do the best I can.
I just was, I was just going to say, the factual statement, which I even might have made during committee reports, is that we do not currently have a lease. That's the factual statement that I made. I even made that earlier during committee reports, I'll say that first.
No, that's fine.
And I'll say, second, that I think the, I think you'll agree that a tenant is entitled to a lease.
So, lawyers like things to be in writing.
Okay.
And so, we like to have written leases. Is it legally required? Not specifically, no, but we like everything to be in writing, this way there's no confusion as to what each party's responsibilities are.
So, my first statement and my second statement, and I have my equals, I think, have a lease.
Okay.
That's all I want to say.
That's fine.
That's all.
Yes, Jean?
I have a comment on something different. I just have a couple of updates. They're pleasant updates. So, last weekend, I attended the school board's leadership weekend at no charge of the district. It was completely covered by a donation by Del V M Ware. But I wanted to highlight one session with Vincent De Lucia, the educator in residence, where he talked about the Iowa Lighthouse Study and the school board's report on student achievement. And he reminds everybody of the importance of focusing on student achievement. And he also shared that the school board's NJ SBA's updated strategic plan actually broadens the definition of achievement to include the non-college-bound learner, which I thought was really great. The second item I wanted to mention was at account, as county officer, I wanted to mention that all school board members can attend any county meeting, not just Somerset County. You can actually go to neighboring towns. So, next week, on May 2nd, Wednesday, Middlesex County is having their meeting focused on school funding. And then the following week, on May 7th, Monmouth County is having theirs, and May 9th, Hunterdon County is having theirs, but they didn't post an agenda. Next, I wanted to just, actually, I see Liz in the audience. The parent learning community is having its spring session currently, and tomorrow, Tuesday, is Bring a Friend session, where a Hillsborough police officer will update the community on current trends with our youth. So, you can talk to Liz if you want to know the location. Also, next week, on Friday, May 11th, the Hillsborough Millstone Municipal Alliance is meeting at 9:00 a.m. And also later that night, I don't know if Henry was going to talk about it, but I just wanted to, if it's okay, to just mention that the hope for tomorrow will be held at the Woods Road Firehouse from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will support and raise awareness for social, emotional, and mental health awareness, and sponsored by the HEA, Borough Safe, and Woods Road Schools, Home and School Association. So, I have a flyer if anybody's interested. Thank you for your support, and thank you.
Thank you. Henry, did you have any other items on behalf of the HEA?
Good evening, Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, Laurel Drive. Jean stole my thunder tonight, but that's okay, I appreciate the plug. The only thing I'd like to add to that is that we are, this is open to the entire community. There's going to be many events for students, so this is open to whole families. It is not strictly limited to staff of Hillsborough or to just our members. This is an open event, it's through our pride program. And I would like to extend an invitation to each of you as well, and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, and thank you for your work on this. Okay, any other comments from the board? Going once, going twice? Okay, take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you next time.